It is six o'clock and this session of the City Council is now in session. If you want to speak to an issue on the agenda, if you will be sure and fill out a speaker's form and then that needs to get to the City Secretary in order for you to speak. There are a couple of items that are public hearing and on those items, you don't have to sign up. So it is good to see you here and at this time, we're going to have our invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilman Sigerman.
If you'll pray with me, please. As we deliberate and consider all of our evening's agenda items, give us the wisdom and confidence in our final decisions with your hand in the decision-making process. And remind us to listen and encourage input on all of these matters. In your son's name we pray, amen. You'll join me in the pledge?
I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me say this, and it's kind of a, well, it's in order in this regard. Last week, or at the last council session, we recognized and swore in two new council members. Gary Cochran, place one, Kim Clarkson, place two. We welcome them again.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And thank you all for showing up tonight. We, I trust everybody had a great Memorial Day. We had a very good ceremony yesterday in front of the courthouse. It was pretty moving. Obviously, a great day to remember all the sacrifices that have been made to the country. Let's move on to what's ahead. We've got the summer reading club coming up. We have Laura over here from the library. The Kerrville Library's annual summer reading club begins Saturday, this Saturday, June 1st, and it will conclude on Friday, July 26th. This year's theme is a universe of stories. This is always a fun and popular event. It involves traditional books, ebooks, audiobooks, books on CD, any way you can read or listen. If you want to learn more about the program or any of the library's other several programs, which includes children's performers, craft activities, Lego club, preschool storytime, and family movies, you can visit the library online. You can also visit the city's website and our Facebook page. I think we have a lot of information out there for you. A lot of fun, great, you guys do such a great program over at the library. All right, and we have before our next City Council meeting, we have Get Outdoors Day. I don't know if, how many people here went last year, but it was a pretty successful event. It was our first one. Parks and Recreation presents the second annual Get Outdoors Day, Saturday, June 8th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Louis Hayes Park. This admission is free. There's all kinds of booths out there, exhibits and activities designed just for the entire family that's gonna have a good time. Now, the day actually is gonna kick off at 8:00 with the second annual Kerrville Craft Beer 5K Run along the River Trail. And that's sponsored by Pint and Plow and Basement Brewers of Texas. We had a very good turnout last year. I'm sure that we'll have more this year. We had great weather last year. Of course, we're hoping for the same thing. And that's a lot of fun. And then at 9:00, following the run, we'll begin the Get Outdoors Day activities. And they run till 1:00. And then we have a sand volleyball tournament that evening, 5:30 p.m. at Lehman Monroe Park. Again, if you want more information on these, it'll be on our city website and our Facebook page. I'll get press releases out tomorrow with a lot of info. Be sure and mark that day and come on out. It was a lot of fun last year and I'm sure it will be again this year.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Any other items of community interest, just general interest?
Mr. Mayor, may I do a couple of thank you's?
Yes, sure.
Kind of to follow on on what Stuart said. I think we, a shout out and a thank you to some people who just really, really worked hard this weekend. One was the ceremony at the courthouse, another was the ceremony out at our national cemetery. And a lot of people put a lot of time into both of those. Jackie Kane and Luanne Anderson headed up the Festival of the Arts and lots and lots of volunteers went into that. So I hope some of you had a chance to enjoy that. It was just really, really successful. And then to Playhouse 2000 and to the Kerrville Daily Times for sponsoring the fabulous Memorial Day concert that the Sentimental Journey did at the auditorium. And it just makes me proud to live in a community where people remember and honor our history and those who have fought for our freedoms. So thank you to all of those who had a part in that.
I'll pass it on to Playhouse. She'll be pleased you were happy with that.
Could I say one thing?
Sure.
This, last week, we had the opportunity as new council people to do an orientation within the city. And I just want to give a shout out to Mr. McDaniel and his staff. We toured, I think, every single department in the city. It was fascinating, just completely, a little bit overwhelming, but I could not have been more proud of the staff that we met from the top to the bottom. They're professional, they're dedicated, and they're passionate, and they're excited about working here. And I just, I commend Mr. McDaniel for making that an environment for those people. I see businesses all over town and other parts of the state, and rarely, if ever, have I seen anything that's being run quite like the city is. And I'm just very proud as a citizen, and I hope you guys will take the time to explore some of that also.
Mayor, could I, I'm sorry, I don't ever do this, could I make an announcement too? Congratulations. We have an esteemed member of the community, an esteemed, are you a member of the press? Yeah, Bonnie Arnold is, Bonnie Arnold, I think, is celebrating her 50th wedding anniversary this week with her husband Larry. And so, I don't even know why that's on my calendar, but it is. Probably Oregon.
And I just, I'm glad that you said that, Gary. I just want to concur, I mean, I have been absolutely so amazed and impressed with all of the city employees that I've met, how helpful and responsive they are. Whenever I have a question, the answer comes back to me in a very timely way, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate everyone taking their time, especially those who followed us, like Mr. McDaniel, from place to place, learning things that they didn't need to learn because they deal with them every day. And also, I want to thank the library and the Get Outdoors Day and all of the things that our family have enjoyed over the past several years, things that weren't there when I was growing up. So I think that, I just want to note that it's appreciated, and I just hope the community will continue to enjoy those activities because they're very enjoyable to me and my family.
Good, all right, okay. We come to the Visitors Citizens Forum. Again, if you want to speak, please sign a speaker's form. And this is limited to the first 10 speakers, and each speaker is limited to four minutes. And let me tell you, the council cannot respond to you or interact through this, but it may be that we refer in action to the staff or whatever out of this. Okay, Visitors Citizens Forum, if we have any speakers. Ms. Brown?
Joseph Johnson.
Okay.
I'll let you, I'll hand you a brief.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if I seem a little nervous, it's because I am. My name is Joseph Johnson. I live at 401 Oak Road. I lived in Kerrville all of my life until about four years ago, and my wife and I moved out, just outside of Kerrville, between here and Harper. Bringing to y'all today, an idea, just a little seed to put in y'all's head for future developments in Kerrville. It would be fantastic in my mind if there was a disc golf course, 18-hole disc golf course here in Kerrville. We've got beautiful area to do it. Disc golf is really exploding all over the world, but really in Texas and other places as well. The costs really are very affordable, considering I read an article in the newspaper today that I believe the county commissioners were considering spending upwards of $54,000 on some various park improvements for playground gear and things like that, some safety stuff. Really and truly, if it's on, on city property, you know, property already owned by the city, a championship-level disc golf course can be put in for approximately $20,000. That's not something I just came up with, but that's from the PDGA's official website, where they've pretty much come up with the, all the things you need, tee boxes and the baskets and everything. I just played, thing that got me really thinking about it, on May the 18th, I played a tournament and it ended up in Bandera. They've got, they did these, you know, specialty discs. It would be, it's advertising for Kerrville, you know, these discs are gonna be my bag for years to come, and everybody I play with is gonna see it and think, hey, well, you know, they'd be neat, let's go check it out. There's quite a few apps, UDisc being the biggest one, that I know myself, I've spent some time, when I go on vacation, I'll check the app and try to find where I can find a new course to play, to, you know, see what's going on. I've gone to quite a few little towns I would have never thought of stopping, and if it wasn't, you know, wasn't for frisbee golf. There's a couple of spots in Kerrville that would be pretty good. The one in my mind that would be the best is not actually city property, but directly across the street from the sports complex. It's already kind of a sports area, there's, you know, bathroom facilities, plenty of parking. If the city could work with the Calhoun Foundation to get approximately a 20-acre area, that would be plenty for a legitimately tournament-level course. There's a place in Kansas, I can't think of the name right now, I'm nervous. They have an event, it's pretty much the largest disc golf event in the nation. It lasts about a week and it brings $2 million into their community of about 25,000 people. There was another one in, another big tournament in Las Vegas that they estimated the economic impact to be approximately half a million dollars. And I fully understand, you don't put a course in and then you run the biggest tournament in the nation, but one of the biggest hangups for things like that is the size of the course. A lot of the courses are very old, and it's, you know, would be something that for a small investment, considering some other things, I think the city of Kerrville could do and over time would bring in, you know, more hosts.
Okay, thank you, Joseph.
Thank you. Wilfred Huer?
My name is Wilfred Huer, 203 Green Oaks, Lou Berksburg, with the townhouses here on Low Street in Kerrville. Thank you for listening to me again about the danger of flooding to the eastern portion of Low Street. Years ago, our homestead got totally flooded, I mean, totally. So I do have some experience about the effects that sealed-off land can have to an already pretty dangerous situation. As you might know, the construction, the construction at 704 Junction Highway is now well underway, and even an additional area of 2,500 or 3,000 square yards, being sealed off or not, can make all the difference of getting flooded or not. We feel when the city of Kerrville allows the construction on 704 Junction Highway, they simultaneously must address the drainage situation. You can't do one without the other. When the additional runoff rainwater from this property enters an already hopeless overfilled drainage ditch, there must be some measures taken to alleviate the situation and get relief now. As I have done before, I again urge you to look at the possibility of cleaning out and deepening, maybe even extending, the existing drainage ditch on the south riverside of the Junction Highway in order to increase the water holding capacity of the entire ditch, of the entire ditch, and in addition, try to reduce the amount of runoff rainwater that comes down the hills in streams and pools on the Low Street each time we have a rainstorm. This shouldn't be cost prohibitive, but if the current budget is too tight, we would even be willing to contribute with our own money to make things happen. The situation is that desperate. The information we got as pertaining to the proposed drainage master plan is that if everything goes well without any delay, it may be at the very least two years away, but most likely longer than that. During that timeframe, we could easily be flooded several times, especially once the construction on 704 Junction Highway is finished and the land sealed off. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Deninger?
Susan Deninger, 103 Turnpike Circle. Thank you, Mayor Blackburn, for making one of your listed things, to have citizens contribute to this meeting. We don't know each other, really, and to me, you're for real estate agents and a politician, and I'm before you because you want to represent our community, of which I'm a member. My perspective on Kerrville is impacted by being a social worker, a Christ follower, and an ex-Californian. On April 11th, the Daily Times said Kerrville was $60 million in debt. Now, on May 28th, I believe we are at least $62 million in debt. There were more expenses involved with the middle school than planned for, studies cost a lot, and so forth. Ms. Dozier said property values are natural collateral for debts. Jack Pratt said that we retirees are sitting on millions and that debt should not be a problem. How does he know that? And how does he plan to access our extra money that on our fixed incomes is designed to carry us another 10 to 20 years? My husband and I are not rich, but now I see that all the folks fleeing other states and raising your property values with no lowering of rates by the city to acknowledge the uptick received by the appraisals, I understand how you plan to access our money. Property appraisal, sewer and water rates, sales tax, according to Ms. Dozier, maybe covers 11% of debt. You just renegotiated our K-Pub debt so that we are paying only the interest for another two or three years, I believe? Concorrect me on that if you want. Why was that necessary? And I believe the vision for this community has gotten sidetracked, and that's really what I'm here for. The 2050 Community Plan keeps being referred to. The number seven priority is tourism, infrastructure. Yet all we talk about is how to get the new convention center, our Olympic pool further upgraded, a walkability plan for whom. Number one is infrastructure, and number two is quality of life to attract economic development. What does that look like? Carver Park West badly needs trees around its nice playground equipment and its splash park. Those children are right out in the full sun when they play. Our streets need striping so we can tell what lane we're in. Not necessarily blue stripes to relate us to the river, please, white and yellow, with the holes and cracks around public areas that flood fixed. We need to focus on housing and jobs. We need to find Kerrville's niche. I've heard a couple of interesting possibilities in the last few weeks. We could become a destination training center for the youth of western Texas in a variety of fields. Alamo College and Shriner both offer career opportunities. The Kerrville Youth Commission wanted to be mentored to shadow administrative jobs. There's the big seed, the little seed, all kinds of arts centers and training groups with small business support groups scattered around the community. We have an airport out here, surely there could be some training jobs attached to that. You could put some energy into coordinating, offering matching support to, and marketing us as a training community for a variety of fields. Others have ideas on our potential to be a tech center. A May Times piece on the sports complex said we got it. On-the-job training for one local operations director out of that $18 million project? I hope the grounds and maintenance folks are local. Do you know, we pay $1,200,000 a year on that debt. At a March 2018 Chamber Forum for Judges, I heard a winning judge say we needed a convention center. Ha! Also, my Times, Leon, I have no doubt you'd like your constituents to be as happy and as prosperous as you are. I understand you're getting a raise, I hope you will consider some more visions for this place. Tours needs to be on our ballot, let's get our codes updated and applied, and we need that hotel downtown perhaps, some affordable housing, and support given to existing infrastructure that needs to be updated. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've got two more.
Oh, sorry about that, I was jumping the gun.
Good evening, my name is Dale Trees, I live at 115 Plaza Drive, and I'm also the chairperson for the City of Kerrville Recovery Community Coalition. I want to give a shout out to Mayor and Councilwoman Clarkson for visiting. Two weeks ago, we had a, on May 18th, we had a recovery rally at Carver Park. We had well over 100 people who attended, and I stopped counting at 100 when we served lunch. And throughout the rest of the afternoon, we had a number of people who were coming and going, so we maintained that level. And I just want to give a shout out and thank you for your support, and I know everyone here does support that. We appreciate you showing up. And there were a number of comments with some of our folks in recovery here in the community who were shocked and surprised to understand, to finally realize, because we talked about it, that the support that the city offers behind this, and we really appreciate it. I want to mention one item that's coming up in two weeks from today. It's on June 11th at 1:00 to 3:00 at Peterson Health Hospice and Home Care Building at 250 Colley Drive. One of the members of our Coalition Board, Steve Potler, is the COO of Peterson Health, and he's helped organize this. We're having an opioid overdose reversal training at the facility at Peterson Health Hospice. Again, it's from 1:00 to 3:00. Most of our first responders, I believe, we've made notice toward, and we will continue to promote this. We have room for about 100 participants. The KRCC, the Kerrville Recovery Community Coalition, has a Facebook presence, and on Facebook, we have an Evite to this event for anyone who has an interest, and that's the process to RSVP. And while I have the podium, I support the disc golf, by the way. It's been about eight and a half years since I played, and I want to reference back to the kayak group, the Kerrville Youth Advisory Committee, speaking on the part of needing more activities for the youth, and that's a perfect, wonderful thing to pursue for them. So I'll support them on that. But again, thank you for your support for the Recovery Community Coalition, and thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Dale. Okay, Bruce Stricki?
Bruce Stricki, 615 Earl Garrett. My goodness, this is an active place. And I saw proof of that last week. A group of us went to Las Vegas to sell Kerrville and to talk about it, and to talk about the parks and the walking trails and the infrastructure that we already have, and the river, and how that adds to quality of life, and why this is such a great small town, the greenest small town in Texas. And that was a really interesting experience. Last City Council meeting, the Arcadia had a soft open house. Over 200 people showed up. Talk about the new events and opportunities that are gonna be at the Arcadia. We've all seen it vacant for way too many years. That's a public-private opportunity that is going on there, and the Arcadia is continuing, that's Kerrville River on the 4th, by the way. They're continuing to look for donations to that project as well. I've seen cuts in Facebook and in the newspaper recently, private citizens getting involved in the Kerrville Urban Trail System, a system that was started privately with private funds that is going on and continuing to go on. We have plans at the office, plans, and I just happen to have a set of plans. Plans, of course, Jeremy, the Walters, they have done that so much with Pint and Plow. The Folk Festival, the longest Folk Festival in the United States, is going on right now in Kerrville, Texas. That is, and if you haven't looked at the list of artists who are there this year, it's incredible. This is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity every year. We had the Arts Festival this last weekend, that was a wonderful forwarding bookend to the ceremonies yesterday, which I saw, Walt Canick was that one beautiful picture of you in the paper, by the way, Walt. Sorry, whoever he went. You moved on me. And others, Mayor Blackburn, I didn't see a picture of you, but I saw your wife, so I know that there was participation in the city at all those ceremonies of people who have given the greatest gift, their life. They gave their life for our country, for our city, and some of our streets are named after some of those folks as well. In the city, we also have a program that's trying to bring an incubator where we would start small businesses here in Kerrville and do that with private funds, and that's a program that's being done through the Chamber and Shriner University. Shriner University also offers paid interns. I have one in my office, and many businesses do. It's not a free thing, you don't get free slave labor, you gotta pay them a decent wage, and they do good work, and they're sharp people, and they want to get ahead of life. There are so many different varieties of things. Disc golf, that's a really interesting idea, I'm gonna mention it to the cows the next time I talk to them. And, you know, I don't know if we have 20 acres over there, but we have some land, so maybe, maybe that can work out. This afternoon, I was headed over towards the post office and another property that I needed to take a look at, and once again, I saw concerts in the park. This weekend, right, the first, is that right?
Yeah.
Somebody's here. Concerts in the park, another free program here in the city for a quality of life. This is the greatest little town in Texas, it's the greenest little town in Texas, and we want what so many people want. They move here because they like the small, and the New York Times described it best in the fall of 2011 in a wonderful article I share with anyone. The headline was "A Hill Country Town That Whispers, Not Shouts." That's what we want to be.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Can we get a transcript of that?
That's it. Okay. In our last council meeting, we had a lot of recommendations. Tonight, we have, we have three. First is Building Safety Month. Hey, before I go into this, tell the folks who you are and what you do.
My name is Brian Hunt, I'm the building official for the City of Kerrville, in charge of the Buildings Department, Building Inspections, Plan Review. I sit in on the planning department, Development Review team, and I love what I do. I try to make the citizens and the people that visit Kerrville a certain place, for everybody that comes to visit us and lives here. And as part of my position, I belong to the International Code Council, which is the people that write the building codes for the, their international building codes. And so they also promote this Building Safety Month, so that's the reason I brought it to Kerrville when I came to Kerrville.
Good, good. I don't want to read all of this, but I want to read some key portions. Whereas the City of Kerrville recognizes that a component of the city's growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens. And whereas the International Code Council in Texas are part of a diverse partnership involved in structure and building design, construction, sales, and inspections, each year, the International Code Council in Texas dedicate month of May as Building Safety Month to heighten awareness for resilient structures protections to live, work, and play in. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to American prosperity. buildings that are essential to America's prosperity. And whereas no code, no confidence is the theme for Building Safety Month 2019, it encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Whereas codes used by professional inspectors address not only structural soundness, but also electricity, plumbing, accessibility, fire safety, and energy efficiency. Each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, hereby proclaim the month of May 2019 as Building Safety Month. And again, Brian goes out, he is, he is working to ensure the safety of that structure, that it is done in a way that is going to be sustainable, along with fire merciful others, is a matter of make sure of the fire safety. So, it's an important work. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth.
Let me get you. All right. Can I take a little picture?
Thank you.
Julian Zamudio? Julian, did I get it right?
Julian.
Julian!
Julian Zamudio.
I was, I was trying to be very proper and say Julian, but it's Julian.
I was telling my wife he's trying to figure out.
Trina told me that. Yeah, yeah, but I forgot, but anyway. How about last name? Did I almost get it right?
Almost.
Oh, sorry. All right, okay. Here we go. This certificate of recognition is presented to Julian, who owns and operates a landscaping business, Turtle Creek Landscapes in Kerrville. Julian has been a regular contractor for code compliance projects over the past several years, helping to remediate code compliance issues. On more than one occasion, Julian has gone above and beyond his contract work with the City of Kerrville. Code compliance utilizes private companies through a bidding process for compliance efforts when property owners are unwilling or unable to remedy the issue themselves. While finishing up one large cleanup effort, Julian installed new flower beds and plants in the backyard for the homeowner at his expense. More recently, he went out and helped clean up some trash and debris from a home whose owner was unable to do the work, and it was no cost to the homeowner. Due to these kind and generous actions, the City of Kerrville and Kerrville Code Compliance Department commend this citizen for his selfless community service. So, if you want flowers planted in your backyard, you have to report your leave.
That's not for cars.
Thank you so much for that. I appreciate it. Thank you. I will tell you that from the night I was elected, May of 18, I said, "I hope Kerrville becomes known for kindness." Kerrville kindness. You guys do it.
Yes, he is.
Utility Board? You brought, you brought the crew with you. That's great. Let me just say, this does not pertain to this certificate proclamation, but K-Pub has successfully used an apprentice program within K-Pub that really has been very fruitful, been very effective. So I just, I'm going to add that. Certificate of recognition is hereby presented to the Kerrville Public Utility Board. The certificate of recognition is being presented to Kerrville Public Utility Board for winning the national competition to expand solar access. K-Pub won the best low-to-moderate income program in the U.S., in the U.S. Department of Energy's Solar in Your Community Challenge, a $5 million prize competition from the U.S. Department of Energy Solar Technologies Office that aims to expand solar electricity access. The K-Pub-led Kerrville Area Solar Partners team in winning $100,000 of national recognition for their community solar systems to conserve low and moderate-income households and the hosting nonprofit and the hosting nonprofit provide competitively-priced solar energy to these customers. Over the past two years, they developed a program that enabled low- and moderate-income households in the Kerrville and K-Pub area and service area to go solar. Through a novel approach partnered with local nonprofits, K-Pub is installing community solar projects which will total 372 megawatts. What's the AC?
Alternating current. It's 3.72 megawatts.
Okay. Distributing the output from these solar arrays to the nonprofits and the low and medium-income households in keeping with K-Pub's mission to be a provider of reliable, high-quality utility services at the lowest responsible price. The City of Kerrville congratulates K-Pub in all of their work in strengthening the future of Kerrville. Good work.
Thank you.
All right. Hey, real quick, guys. Tell me, give me your name and what position you have at K-Pub.
I'm Larry Lee. I'm General Foreman.
I'm Eric Smith, Senior Deviant.
David Baxter, Energy Efficiency Services.
All right.
Joe Anderson, Customer Service.
Good, thank you.
We also have Allison Boucher here, and she's.
Yeah. Handling marketing. Yeah. That's correct. That's correct.
Sorry.
Mark, just a question. Is part of what they did, is that that area over off of Singing Wind?
Obviously, all it has to tie into that, yeah.
Oh, we talked about that.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, yeah. That's impressive when you drive over there to see that.
Okay. Consent agenda. What we, what this is planned for is to vote on all of these items together unless a member of the council wants to pull one out.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Awesome.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, it would be known by the raised hand. Okay. The. Oh, excuse me. I'm catching up. I've got too much paper up here. Let's move to the public hearings and go into this public hearing at 6:3958.
Resolution 03.2019, a resolution granting a conditional use permit for an approximate 1.166 acres, being a portion of Lot 1, Block 1 of the HEB addition, Lots 300 through 302, and a portion of Lots 348 through 349, Block 48, of the Shriner Second Edition, both subdivisions within the City of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, and more commonly known as the property located at 300 Main Street, State Highway 27. Said property is located within the Central Business District, CBD, by permitting said property to be used for gasoline, station fuel sales with car wash, and convenience store, and making said permit subject to certain conditions and restrictions contained herein.
Okay, Mr. Paxton?
Thank you. This is for conditional use permit, 300 Main Street, for HEB, for their fuel sales and the car wash. Aerial photo showing the existing store, and that fuel sales and car wash. Just a second. Located on the west end of the property, where the existing parking lot and nearer the current fuel sales are. Here's the proposed site plan showing those two uses, you know, the west side of the property. Request is consistent with the Kerrville 2050 Comprehensive Plan as to support access to the infrastructure necessary to accommodate future growth and housing of businesses, and the catalyst being downtown, catalyst for these redevelopment in downtown. Pictures of the current property and some of the adjacent properties on Main Street. And on the backside of the current store, properties along Jefferson Street and Francisco Lemus. Would that be pleased to answer any questions?
And the, all the structures on Lemus continue to exist as they are?
That's correct.
Okay, that was my question. So, the vape shop and what was the seafood place and the vegetable place, those will stay?
That's correct.
Correct.
And the parking lot at 224, 228 Jefferson is a standalone parking lot now. That's not part of.
That's correct. That's an existing parking lot.
And it'll just stay the way it is?
It will.
It's not part of the, the new proposal.
And I was curious, the convenience store, is that, how big do you know, how big is that going to be?
Oh, that's the team from HEB answering that.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Strimple with HEB. Nice to be back speaking with you this evening. That refers to the kiosk. It's not really sales of anything besides cigarettes.
Could you speak up just a little bit for me, please?
Certainly. Sorry. The term convenience store is referring to the kiosk, which is just similar to what's out there today. It's a little bit bigger, but there's no real sales beyond cigarettes offered in it, or payment for your gas, really, and that's about it.
And then would you go over the entrances to this for us again?
Certainly. We have one entrance on Main Street, more or less directly below the red dot on the site.
Where there's an arrow going both directions, okay?
That's the entrance from Main Street, and then up in the top left-hand corner, we have another entrance off of Jefferson Street. And those two driveways have a nice flow between them, which we believe will work well to circulate traffic for the fuel stations, separate from the traffic inside the parking lot itself, different from what you see out there today.
But the alley will remain?
The alley is a public alley, so it will remain.
So all those other, where the, the black line goes away, those are not entrances on, uh, front on Lemus?
No, those are not entrances. That's just indicating where our property line is.
Do you have any other questions?
I have some questions, and just as a point of clarification, one thing that I enjoy is having the opportunity to look at the agendas and ask questions that I have in advance, as well as questions that I may have not had the opportunity to ask. And being new, I asked the city to indulge me on a few things, and one of those was the alley. Let me see. And then another was, is, are there, is there an anticipated higher use across that alley between the western portion of the HEB property and the Francisco Lemus? It's only what, what is it? How many feet is it?
It's something on the order of 17 feet wide.
Yeah.
And we've looked at it, too, and had, had hoped to be able to make it more accessible, but it's just not wide enough, and there's a building sitting right on the property line. So the opportunity there is very limited because of the width of the alley. But it's almost private property, I guess, is a better way to look at that.
And so, is there any mitigation that will, I mean, if you're driving right into a car wash or a gas station, it might be more desirable for someone just to pull in that way. Is there anything that, that the city will be able to do, or that you all will be able to do to mitigate that, or we just have to deal with it as is?
I think it will function much like it does today. And certainly, our traffic patterns are going to change. I don't know that we, we aren't planning to do anything with it because it isn't our alley. So I guess that's.
Right. So there's nothing specific, right? My question to the city was also, if we're issuing a conditional use permit for the property, are we also accepting the proposed design as it is? And if not, will we then need to approve a final design concept?
You are adopting this concept plan. It is that a concept, so it is not a final plan. We do expect some changes as the design of the store, the site continues, but as long as it's in keeping with the intent behind this plan, it would be adopted with this resolution.
Will the alley be one-way, or is it two-way, or maybe you've told us and I have forgotten?
I believe it's marked one-way from the inside the property.
Inside-out.
And we've started a conversation with Public Works, the HEB team, possibility of closing that off to vehicular traffic at this time, or what the future of that looks like. We've started those conversations, but we don't have final confirmation.
So this isn't set in stone?
Correct.
Ah, okay.
As far as the alley.
As far as the alley, yes.
City alley.
Okay.
Clarification. Alley doesn't belong to HEB.
That's right.
It's private property.
With city homes?
No, city.
City homes.
Yeah. And so, what you're saying is, the city has looked at options, including seeing if you could widen it, but when you come down to Lemus, you got private property on both sides.
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
Currently now, when you go into that alley, you can drive right on into the major parking lot and shop at HEB after you've picked up some tomatoes at Jinski's. So, that doesn't look like you can do that here because you'll have the barrier containing the car wash gas lift. Is that what that black line is?
No, that's showing the area for the conditional permit.
So it will still be open? You can still, okay.
Open parking lot through that, but from Jefferson to Main Street is kind of a drive up, main drive out through the parking lot.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Brown, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. Bunny Bond.
And Mayor, I'm not sure you opened the, you officially opened the public hearing. Did you do it? Okay, okay.
He just didn't close it.
Oh, you didn't even close it? Okay.
Okay.
My name is Bunny Bond. I live at 213 Stephanie, and this is not my first time to appear before the council to discuss the HEB development and enlargement. And my main concerns in being here tonight are, number one, concern about protecting the environment, and number two, about traffic safety. So, some of my questions have already been answered. Thank you, and thank you, council, who asked. But I have some other questions. First of all, I would like to know the number of pump islands planned, the number of vehicle fueling stations, that is individual pumps, and I would like to know the number of underground storage fuel tanks. So that's kind of my environmental concerns, principally because located where it is is so close to Town Creek, which feeds right into the Guadalupe River. So my last question regarding the environment would be, is there a TCEQ Arthur Um, so, my last question regarding the environment would be, is there a TCEQ authorization document in the possession of the city of Kerrville that is permitting the increase in the number of pump islands, the increase in the number of vehicle fueling positions, and the increase in the number of underground storage tanks?
Would you like to deal with those, and then go to the second issue?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
I can sit down.
Do we have an answer from Drew or HEB?
HEB needs answering.
Okay.
I'll be happy to.
Let me start with one of your first questions, which is the TCEQ question. Um, there is not a permit that we have to pull to build a fuel station here that's issued by the state. The UST itself does have a registration number, so it's not really a permit, it's more just a registration number, um, that identifies it as being at this location. HEB as a standard, um, builds all of our fuel stations the same across the state, so you will have the same environmental protections here that we would do if we were over the Edwards Aquifer or Barton Springs Recharge Zone, which basically means that everything, every hole we dig in the ground has a plastic liner in it, around it, so that if there is a spill or a leak, it's contained within, um, within that plastic liner that goes underneath. So, the UST has a liner, all our pipe chases have a liner, that, that's the highest form of regulation enforced by TCEQ. It's not required, we do it as a standard. There's not a limit on the number of pumps by the state, um, there's not a license we have to pull to increase the number of, of pumps. Um, we are showing ten on the drawing that you're looking at. That's ten pumps, which means twenty vehicle fueling stations. We are, which is, we're showing the number of, the, the land could, could hold that amount. I really expect that we're gonna put in probably something more like five or six, um, but the number of pumps, I don't believe, and Drew can answer this, and specific number of pumps, I think, is still in design, but I guess what I'm telling you is that it, that the land itself can hold ten, that's what we're showing. Um, I suspect it's gonna be closer to six. Did I hit all of your questions?
Except the underground storage tanks, do you remember?
Yes, there's one underground storage tank that will hold, um, three different products, but it's all in one tank.
And I had a concern about the alley, just because of the number of, it looks like the increase in the number of parking places, and there are only gonna be four ways to get in and get out of that parking lot. And if they go up to two hundred and fifty parking slots, that's a lot of parking cars coming in, entering and exiting those four slots. So, one of my concerns is traffic safety. And then in, also in looking at the diagram, if you'll notice where the pharmacy, people are going to have to be going west on Jefferson and turn across the eastbound lanes to get into the pharmacy drive-through. And if I seem to be picking their concept plan to death, it's for a good reason. We have traffic problems here and traffic flow problems. I use Jefferson quite a bit, so I am aware of the traffic flow there. Have I used up my time?
Do a little bit more.
Okay. Um, so basically, that's, that pretty well covers my concerns, and just simply, once again, I am basically asking HEB to rethink their site plan, because my original statements here before have been to ask them to flip the gas pumps to the east side of Hay Street, leave Hay Street open, flip the store to the west side of the site, so that the store faces east, and that would leave Hay Street as a very accessible corridor still. Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you. All right, uh, any further discussion on that item?
No, I would just like to ask that they, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I don't have any more speakers.
You don't, you don't have any more speakers, okay. But, you don't have to, yeah, 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 it's a public hearing. Bruce?
I just had one comment. If we're accepting the concept plan as it is, typically we require twenty-four feet for two-way traffic, and if you look on the one side of the gas station, we have a twenty-foot lane there, and I think that's a short for two, vehicles are gonna go both directions, and to make a swing and a twenty-foot deal, if we were doing a side entry garage, we'd have a thirty-foot driveway, so that's my only comment, if we're actually accepting that plan tonight.
And that was part of my, my question as well about the traffic, not just the stacking when you come in, but the width and what might happen there with, with the distances. I went out and measured my driveway last night, just to see.
Again, it's, it's preliminary concepts, we'll look at a lot of that, those details through the final design and permitting process.
And I would ask, look at that alley, see if there isn't something, way that could be more than just an alley.
Okay, Bruce is saying what we're voting on tonight is, is it. What you're saying is, there is flexibility yet.
Right. As long as the final design is in keeping with this concept, for the fuel island, the gas pumps, and the car wash, then we'll work through those final details through the permitting process.
But that could be expanding that twenty-foot, uh, looking at the alley, those, those are the things that can change.
Cause this is with ten pumps, and she's saying possibly just six, so maybe there's more room.
Yeah, and I just wanna caution the council about the alley. So, the alley is not wide enough, we all know that. It's, it's, we've tried to make it one-way, not sure that really happens. We don't own the property, there's buildings up against it, so really, we're looking at abandonment of the alley, so it's no longer accessible at all, uh, so that we can block it completely, um, or we're gonna have to acquire property to make it wider, and, you know, that's just not something that we normally would do. And there's also ownership title issues with some of that property that has, is the reason why HEB has shifted to the other side of the property, cause they haven't been able to make that work. So, the alley is, is difficult, uh, item to tackle.
Right.
But we'll, we will continue to look at it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh... What do you want to do on this item?
We, I'll make a motion. You want me to make a motion? I'll make a motion that we, um, go along with Planning and Zoning Commission, who have recommended the approval of the Resolution number oh three dash twenty nineteen as presented.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion second, all in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Okay, unanimous? Okay. We are out of, uh, that public hearing item at six fifty-eight oh four, and we are in the next one, five B. Ms. Brown, if you'll read that for us.
Resolution number thirteen dash twenty oh nine, twenty nineteen, sorry, granting a conditional use permit for an approximate zero point eight-nine acre property, consisting of lots three sixty-nine through three seventy-three, and a portion of lot three seventy-four, block fifty-two, of the Shriners Second Edition subdivision within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, and more commonly known as four hundred, four oh eight, four twelve, and four sixteen, Jefferson Street. Said property is located within the Central Business District, or CBD, by permitting said property to be used for a standalone parking lot, and making said permit subject to certain conditions and restrictions contained herein.
All right, Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, Mayor. This comes to you from the Planning and Zoning Commission from May second. This also is in strategic catalytic area number one. As Kerrville twenty fifty comprehensive plan states, there should be a strong focus on redevelopment and catalyzing a renewed public interest in the area, just being a part of the HEB rebuild project. Says across the street from the current store on Jefferson Street. As you can see here on the corner of Jefferson and Hayes, and this is down the street from the existing parking lot on Jefferson. There's proposed concept plan. There's the tree survey that was done, and tree preservation plan that was done on that survey. This is the property as it is today, and the adjacent properties along Jefferson Street. There's the existing trees that we're talking about in the tree survey. The planning commission recommends it for your approval with these six conditions, I'll briefly go over these. Tied to the concept plan as Exhibit B, pedestrian accommodations at a five-foot sidewalk view installed abutting the subject property along Jefferson and Hay Street, which ties into a high-visibility crosswalk at, cross Jefferson at the intersection of Hayes and Jefferson. The exterior lighting fixtures must employ a permanent cutoff angle of ninety degrees or less and be positioned as to not emit light above the horizontal plane of the fixture. Parking area must be screened from view with public right-of-way along Hayes and Jefferson Streets to a minimum height of three feet by dense native vegetation and/or fence or wall. Landscape screening may not interfere with the clear vision area located at the intersections and driveways, and planted screens are encouraged to use native plant species that vary in height and density. Item E, we do have one correction, on the one-half of the healthy or non-disease native, non-invasive existing trees must be preserved unless removal is necessary to provide utilities or pedestrian or vehicular access driveways, but not for parking. And the correction is the post oak tree indicated on the preservation plan is not the southwest corner intersection, the north side of the property, uh, just below the words adjacent property. And then any other zoning regulations set forth in this resolution, or the zoning code amended or superseded, in the event of any irreconcilable conflict between these and the resolution, regulations set forth in the zoning code will supersede.
Okay, thank you very much. I have, I have a question, uh, from HEB staff. Uh, I looked at this tonight before our meeting of, of the area, so the, uh, what was, the muffler sound place that was there on the corner, it's obviously closed out. The next, uh, business, the land's pretty much cleared. Is that as far as you go on that block?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay. Okay, what questions do you have, council?
I was curious, was this for employee parking?
Yeah.
I assumed. Uh, and then the information that we just saw, Drew, I, it would be nice to have, just for my future reference. Uh, I, I liked all of the things regarding the sidewalk, the lighting, the tree preservation, I didn't, I'm glad to know that we have, will have that wording. Will it be, where will it be, with the ordinance?
It'll be with the resolution, yes.
Okay, with the resolution.
And those are the conditions of approval for this conditional use permit.
For some reason, I didn't get it, did y'all get that? If you did, great, I, I didn't see it in mind, but anyway, I'm really glad, cause those were some of my questions.
I don't think, I don't think we did. Was it supposed to be in there?
Yes.
The resolution?
Well, as long as it is at some point, cause I, I'm glad you, I was gonna ask you about sidewalks and the lighting and tree preservation especially, because we're really trying to do that, a better job of that than we have in the past, with some other developments that we've had, so, thank you.
Is there, is, do you, have you decided, will there be, uh, plants, or will there be a three-foot fence?
We're intending to put shrubs across the perimeter to, um, just to block the headlights, but not, not a tall fence on the board. Not on that side.
Comment first, I was really was pleased to see that the tree plan, uh, preservation plan was in there. Now, that was brought up before, and I appreciate the responsiveness on that. And then, um, question for the city. In the resolution, it says that proper notice was given to surrounding properties, how, what does that entail?
Notice, you can notice mail the property owners within two hundred feet of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, that's actually that dotted red line surrounding the property there.
Do you have any response to those notices that were sent out?
Off the top of my head, I don't believe so. Uh, I take that back, adjacent, one of the adjacent property owners is the one who was concerned about the trees and growing up in the area.
Okay, which has been responded to.
Right, that's correct.
This, this doesn't affect my burden. Uh, as is true that existing parking lot for employees on Jefferson, you, you, you got plenty of lighting and...
Yes, our intent would be to make that a safe place for our partners to park, and so the lighting in the, in that parking lot will be the same as it is in the grocery store with the same cutoff fixtures, so we're not polluting beyond our bounds.
Yeah, so it's the-
All right.
Park skies.
Okay, council, what, what is your recommendation on this?
I would move that we-
Wait, I'm sorry, do we have any speakers? No, okay.
Okay. Uh, I would move that we approve Resolution, uh, Resolution number thirteen dash twenty nineteen, uh, granting the conditional and use permit.
I'll second it.
Maybe we got a motion and a second? All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand? Okay. We go out of that public hearing at seven oh six, and come to ordinance's first reading. Ms. Brown, if you'd read six A for us.
Ordinance number twenty nineteen dash ten, and ordinance amending the twenty nineteen fiscal year budget to account for the transfer of excess funds, the receipt of additional revenue, and to make other amendments as provided herein.
Okay. Yes, Ms. DeSoto?
Hi, Emmy. Hello, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here today to tell you about, um, this ordinance to amend the twenty nineteen budget. I wanted to start by giving you just a little bit of background, um, so our budget was adopted by ordinance, um, all budgets require adoption by ordinance, which means two readings and two votes on it. Um, the budget was adopted in September of twenty eighteen, and like it does every year, there are unforeseen events that happen, um, during the year that require some changes to the budget. Some of these changes do not impact expenditure levels overall, and they just require moving money between budget line items. In that case, um, the city manager has authorization to approve, um, just shifting, um, budget money between line items. However, tonight, we're discussing items that require council approval, um, because these, um, items either increase overall expenditures or revenues, um, and they increase it over that level that was originally approved in September twenty eighteen. Um, I'll refer you to your packet where you have the detail regarding these amendments, um, and then I'll just give a brief overview as well. So, we're bringing forward, um, items that consist of some fund balance transfers, um, some unbudgeted revenues that we've received and associated expenditures with those, and then also just some accounting, financial reporting related issues. The first two amendments relate to fund balance transfers. So, as you know, we use a fiscal year, so it starts October first and ends September thirtieth, um, so our fiscal year twenty eighteen ended September thirtieth, twenty eighteen. After that time, we have to close the books, and then we have an audit done, and then we present the audited financial statements to council, um, usually at the end of February, it has to be by the end of March. So, it's been our practice for the last few years to wait until we're completely done, we've gotten sign-off from our auditors, presented the, um, official annual report, and then we look at where our fund balance positions ended and make recommendations about, um, if we need to move any money related to that fund balance. So, that's what we're doing here. So, each year, we budget for the general fund and the water fund to have exactly equal revenues and expenses of balance budget, um, but of course, it never works out exactly that way. So, um, we have a practice of, um, transferring excess revenues, if we have them, um, to fund, uh, one-time capital purchases or, um, vehicle purchases, that kind of thing, and that's in accordance with our financial policy. So, um, on the general fund side, we are proposing a four hundred thousand dollar transfer of excess fund balance, um, related to our twenty eighteen audited financial statements. We're proposing that two hundred thousand of that be transferred to our asset replacement fund, and that would be to purchase things like, um, patrol vehicles, um, vehicles for parks, engineering, um, we recently purchased a fire truck, um, is one that you've seen come through recently. And then we also are proposing, um, two hundred thousand go to our general capital projects fund, and that would be for capital project items such as, um- fund, and that would be for capital project items such as some of the things that you've seen recently, our master plans related to drainage and public safety, pavement. We also have some upcoming repairs to the Olympic pool, so it could be used for any of those items. It's important to remember, though, that throughout our twenty twenty budget process, we'll be talking more in depth about the capital projects that y'all will be approving for next year, and then also anything that is over fifty thousand dollars as far as the individual purchase or contract would come to council for individual approval of that item. So this is just transferring money to those funds so that it could be used for one of those designated purposes. And a little bit more information, so on the general fund side, we have a policy that's in accordance with the Government Finance Officers Association's recommendation that we keep fifteen to twenty-five percent of our fund balance as unassigned, and you can think of it kind of like a savings account. You know, we'd like to have about three months' worth of operating expenditures, and our savings account is the idea there. So at the end of the fiscal year, at nine thirty, we actually had thirty-one point five percent was the percentage of unassigned fund balance that we had, and that's the fund balance as a percent of operating expenditures, so the denominator is operating expenditures. After this four hundred thousand dollar transfer, that would take us down to thirty percent, so we would still be above our twenty-five percent threshold. On the water side, we're proposing a hundred thousand dollar transfer to the water asset replacement fund. They are saving up for some large purchases in the next few years, specifically a VAC Con truck that's like a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar vehicle purchase that would take multiple years to save for, but it would be purchased out of that asset replacement fund, so they'd like to, you know, start saving towards that. The water fund side's a little bit different, because we look at the ratio of current assets to expenditures there, and it's just an accounting difference, because this is an enterprise fund type. But at the end of the year, when you look at our cash plus our current receivables as a percent of operating expenditures, and we were at twenty-nine point three percent, we'd also like to keep that above twenty-five percent. If we do this hundred thousand dollar transfer, it takes us down to twenty-eight point five percent, so we'd still be above our target. Number three on your list accounts for the receipt of a hundred and two thousand dollars from HEB, and that is for the Hayes Street right-of-way agreement that was passed recently, and that was something that was not part of our budget, it was a revenue that was not budgeted for. So we'd like to take that money, which we actually have already received, and move it to the capital projects fund as well. And this allows us to be able to pay cash and not have to borrow, but pay cash for things like replastering the Olympic pool, something like that. Number four on the list is another one that is revenue that we did not budget for. This is grant revenue, and we make it a practice to not budget for grant revenue unless we know that we've actually been awarded that grant, and so these were grants that were awarded after the budget process. And both of these grants came from ACOG, and they relate to recycling programs. One was a grant where we were able to purchase recycling receptacles, and one was a grant that helped pay, pay for our household hazardous waste event that was held back in November. And so that has equal expenses as well. So we received the money, and then we're going to pay the money for the expenses that we received the grant for. Number five on the list, it relates to the police special revenue fund. So as you know, we have multiple special revenue funds. The police department has one, and the primary source there would be seized funds. So if they seize either cash or vehicles from criminals, and the case is prosecuted, and the district attorney awards seized funds to the city, we can receive money from those seizures. And, but that money has to be used for police, or it has to be used for the police department, but it shouldn't be used for just like paying salaries, something like that. It should be used for special purchases for the police department. So we're not going to put it in the general fund, we put it in a special revenue fund, called the police special revenue fund. At the end of last fiscal year, the police special revenue fund had almost sixty-one thousand dollars in fund balance, so they built up this fund and they haven't used it for purchases. They would now like to purchase a twenty thousand dollar used vehicle that they will use for undercover vehicle, so we're proposing drawing down some of their existing fund balance for this allowable purchase under the terms of the police special revenue fund. Number six relates to banking fees. We have a relationship with Wells Fargo and a contract with them that they allow us to do things one of two ways. We can either not receive any interest income and not be charged any fees, or we can pay their fees and receive interest income, and it's a, you know, just kind of a break-even analysis that we have to do, that when interest rates rise to a certain level, then it's to our benefit to say, okay, we want to take the option, where you give us interest revenue and we pay fees. So interest rates have been very low for multiple years, and we were on the, just, you know, no cash out one way or the other option. And we got to a point this year, though, where it became advantageous for us to switch and say, we'd like to receive the revenue and pay the fees. So we've done that, and we've been making about two thousand dollars a month net, so it's, it's good for us. But we did not have any budget for those fees, so we're asking to amend the budget for banking fees, and then also an offset there for interest revenue. Number seven also relates to grants, and this is on the EMS side. So EMS has received two grants. They received a grant from, actually, this first one is from the trauma care system fund, and it was used to purchase an air trach intubation device and some technology equipment. So they received a grant of almost fourteen thousand dollars, and then they'd like to purchase these specific items of equipment with that. Number eight is on the fire side. We have received grants from STRAC related to emergency deployments. I believe these were related to the October flooding events and some emergency deployments there, so we'll send our fire staff to help other jurisdictions, and we get a reimbursement grant for their time. So we received fourteen thousand dollars there, and we'd like to record that revenue and then increase their overtime budget, because obviously, when they send people away, then they have to backfill here at home, and that creates overtime here. Number nine relates to the library memorial fund. That's another special revenue fund kind of idea, so people give money to the library memorial fund, it has to be used for the library. They've received donations in excess of what was budgeted this year, and they'd like to make some purchases with those. So they would like to buy some more books, magazine storage bins, Wi-Fi access point, and a subscription to a software service to help update and secure the public access computers. Number ten relates to our Texas Water Development Board funding. That was not finalized when we prepared the budget, so as it turned out, we were fourteen thousand dollars off on our interest expense estimate. So this would true up our actual interest expense for the year to exactly equal their, the amortization schedule we have. But luckily, we have received additional interest revenue in excess of what we budgeted for the current year, so we have additional interest revenue to cover that fourteen thousand dollars, so it doesn't require any more transfer from the water fund. And then the final one is, it's a non-cash item, looks like a big number there, but it's a non-cash item, so this is related to the Texas Water Development Board loans as well, and this is just an accounting treatment issue where we were originally thinking that that money would go directly into the capital projects fund, but for our financial reporting purposes, we have to take it to the water fund first and then transfer it to the capital projects fund. So this is an amendment just related to that transfer, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Well, that particular number, eight million, I know that we, we are, our actual cost estimates have come in under that. So this money will collect interest somewhere while it's waiting to be used as we need it?
Yes, yes, it does. So, yeah, the way the Water Development Board debt works on both the TTHM and Legion Lift side is, it's like a draw kind of situation. So rather than just funding the money upfront, we didn't get the money when the loan closed. Instead, we get it in draws over time as we actually expend the money, and in the meantime, it's held in an escrow account, and we do receive the interest from that escrow account on a monthly basis.
So this on, it sounds very positive all the way around.
Yes, it does.
Yes, there's a lot of, you know, grants, and a lot of good work from different departments to apply for these grants and get programs going with some outside money, so.
In the past, we've actually done this very close to the end of the fiscal year and just done it all at once, so we're bringing to you an early set of amendments. This helps to set us up for the budget process, to know what we have and what accounts, so that we can propose some, some, a budget for you for next year. So you'll see a lot of this again for your consideration as we try to program for next year's budget.
And, and it, he brings up a good point as well, that we still will have another budget amendment at the end of the year, because I'm sure there'll be some more things that come up between now and then, but this is what we have so far.
This is very, it's good to, easy to understand. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. I have one more question, and you may not know the answer to this, but, and I'm sorry, the HEB people aren't here anymore, but I thought I remembered a commitment they made, maybe just verbally, to do something about the water that collects in front of Cowboy Steakhouse on that road. So where would we eventually see that? And I, like I said, this is not, the only reason I bring it up is the hundred and two thousand that, regarding the right-of-way that they have paid, but...
So it's part of the general site development plan process, and actually, we do have some civil elements that have already been submitted to staff, and staff's in the process of revealing those as part of their drainage plan.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Before you go, it's a good time to do a clarification. I have found some people think that members of the council get rich on being on the council, and then I hear about a raise, and nobody told me about a raise. For clarification...
We have not budgeted a raise.
You have not budgeted, okay, okay. You know, we receive, we receive twenty-five dollars per council session, so fifty dollars a month.
Yes, and Councilmember Clarkson informed us that that is her babysitting money for tonight.
I give that to Austin, directly to Austin.
Well, there you go. I was just told not to spend it all in one place.
All right. Are we ready to vote on this one?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a motion or a second?
I'd be glad to make a motion that we approve the ordinance as presented.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, give a motion, a second. All in favor, a raised hand. Thank you, Ms. Davis. All right.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, good job.
Yeah, okay. Six B, if, Ms. Brown, if you would read that in.
Ordinance number twenty nineteen dash twelve, amending in its entirety, Chapter Ten, alcoholic beverages of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas, regarding the city's authority over the sale of alcoholic beverages to include the process for the city's imposition and collection of fees, to prohibit sales within areas zoned for residential use, to prohibit sales within three hundred feet of churches, public hospitals, schools, and childcare facilities, and to adopt a variance progress applicable, sorry, I lost my thing, applicable to such distance requirement, containing a savings and severability clause, providing for an effective date, ordering publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject.
Okay, Mr. Paxton.
Thank you. As Development Services staff began looking at a couple proposed projects in town, found that the current separation was going to prohibit some of those projects. We started looking into what it would take for council to be authorized to grant a variance to that separation. Through that review, kind of our revision turned into a complete rewrite to clarify, condense the chapter, as well as add the variance process. City of Kerrville has regulated alcohol sales since nineteen thirty-three. The Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission regulates most of the portions of sales of alcohol. They do delegate some of that authority to the municipalities, particularly when it comes to the separation between protected entities, the church, school, hospital, and Council has adopted that policy from schools and churches, but not hospitals and daycares currently, and currently does not have a variance process for that. The Kerrville Comprehensive Plan identified several areas across the community as strategic catalyst areas, focused on redevelopment and reinvestment into the community, and additional place types, to kind of translate the land use plan into zoning categories. Through those land, place types, we look at the catalyst area for downtown and some of the mixed-use areas around town, and with that reinvestment, one of the things staff looked at, other cities across the state actually apply more or less a blanket variance to certain districts in town. So we looked at that as far as a downtown zoning district and the future mixed-use zoning district, to allow that blanket variance for restaurants only. The updates, kind of going through this quick list here of the highlights, does establish the fee, does not change the fee schedule as it's currently adopted, just since it is a complete rewrite, establishes the fee for that certificate, restricts the alcohol sales in residential areas, continues the separation requirements for churches and public schools, adds the separation requirements for public schools, hospitals, and daycares, and establishes the council's authority for that variance. The process includes a public hearing at the council, and eliminates the separation requirement in those certain districts for downtown and mixed-use, and also limits the hours for alcohol sales. The separation requirements, again, based on the different types of use for church or a public hospital, is actually measured from front door to front door, from the business entity selling to the church or hospital along the property lines, along the right-of-way. For public and private schools, it's actually a direct line from property line to property line, and childcare facility is also property line to property line. With that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions that you have?
Yes, sir, I have a question. Would you explain page six of seven, its K variance within the districts? As, as I read that, we've got, we've got a blanket variance, which means anybody can, basically, and that's why I need to make sure I'm reading this correctly, that anyone can go ahead and get a license, do that kind of thing, and they don't have to come to us?
That's correct.
Is that what I'm reading correctly?
In the downtown zoning area?
Yes.
And the proposed mixed-use area?
Yes.
For a restaurant only. So that's not a bar, it's not a package store, not a convenience store, just a restaurant that carries the TABC food and beverage certificate with their on-premise license.
Okay.
Along that same line, Ms. Paxton, because my understanding now is the, we have the three hundred foot setback, and that's currently in place in all the areas.
That's correct.
So this ordinance is, I think, if I'm understanding it right, changing two particular items. One is saying, it's rewriting the ordinance to say that in those zones, as city council, we can now grant a variance from that three hundred feet, which we did not have the authority to previously.
Right. It gives the council the authority to grant a variance anywhere in town.
Except...
And applies a...
But you're taking that, basically, you're removing it completely in those two other zones.
Yes.
And I'm curious, what's, why would you take power away from us?
Yes, I have that same question.
Gotcha. So it's, it's already granting a variance for any restaurant within those districts as just a blanket approval for a restaurant, just to get one step out of the way for some of those projects that are looking to reinvest in those two areas.
Yeah, so I understand. Can you give me a concrete example?
If Grape Juice were opening today and City Hall were at school, they don't meet three hundred feet from property line to property line. Since they're in the downtown area, they would be granted a variance automatically by this ordinance.
As opposed to coming to council and asking for the variance?
That's correct. They would not have to come to council and ask for that variance. If they were outside of, outside of those downtown or mixed-use zoning districts, then they would have to come to the council on a case-by-case basis.
I'm, this has bothered me. I've, I've been struggling with this. I feel like we're giving up some power, and I hate to use that word, power, control, but the ability to say yay or nay with this. And I feel like we need to remove this blanket variance. And I feel like we need to remove this blanket variance as, as it's provided here, and those would have to come to council. Give me reasons that that complicates the situation too much.
The only thing that would do is for a new business opening in downtown that is adjacent to one of the churches or schools downtown, they would have to come before the council, just adding one more step to their process.
And to be clear, this is only for restaurants that have also carrying a license to sell alcohol, but not for a standalone bar, or a convenience store, or another place. So we're talking a restaurant like...
The standalone bar, convenience store, liquor store would all have to come before council anywhere in town.
My understanding is they determine that by the percentage of food to beverage sales?
Yes. The food and beverage certificate requires that they sell 51% food items.
And just again, out of my ignorance, who monitors that?
TABC.
So they go in there and they look at the receipts and they do all that? Okay.
And again, the state gives that authority to municipalities to look at on a case-by-case, and some cities do different blanket variances such as this. Some cities don't, and it's just case-by-case everywhere in town.
Paxton, and I'm really trying, truly not trying to complicate matters, but have we looked to see how many entities this affects as far as churches, schools?
In the downtown area, there's, that I'm aware of, six or seven churches. Some of those have daycare programs or schools. The mixed use is future zoning, so we're looking at the future zoning map and trying to browse through that as quickly as we could. It's certainly going to add a handful more churches or daycares within those areas. I don't have the exact number that the mixed-use component would have. But again, just the downtown alone, six or seven churches in that area.
What I came up with just off the top of my head.
Okay, I haven't looked at the whole, you know, I haven't looked at that exactly, but I can think of eight, eight initially. You know, honestly, my concern is this is pretty complicated, is pretty sweeping, and we saw it Friday, it's where, you know, where it goes. But I think there are enough questions to revisit this and come back. And I want to clarify something here. I'm not saying that because I'm a Baptist preacher. I'm, I'm saying it because of the issue related to what council can, you know, permit and not permit. Somebody told me, he said, "Well, Marriott over here, it's going to be, has to be a dry facility because of its location." Honestly, they're not going to be able to do business that way. So I am open to variances. But I would like a little more time to look at this and talk to other council members.
And I was prepared to have, have a motion to remove it, because it, as I said, I've struggled with this. And, you know, in the grand scheme of things, I mean, it's not a big thing, but for some reason, it's bothered me. So I would, I would ask to, if maybe instead of doing a motion now, if we could relook at that and...
And again, that could be brought back at a later date. Once we have the new zoning in place, we know a better idea of what that's going to impact, whether we remove that now or discuss it a later date.
And...
Mr. Hayes?
Yes, sir.
Is your recommendation that we table it or just say postpone?
That's up to y'all. I mean, it's, it's always, I think, better from staff's perspective. From my speaking myself, if y'all actually vote to table it, because it gets some clarification, and then we'll bring it back in.
Take it off the table.
Well, and I did my own drive-by, but I probably missed something, so maybe a map at least, you know, to go with, to make sure that I'm really thinking about the church I've forgotten about that's on the back street that's a daycare. I don't know all of them, and even driving by, I could miss some, so whether it's six or eight, it might be nice to know exactly.
I think we just need to, I need a little more time on this. So I will make a motion that we table ordinance number 2019-12 for a further look.
All right.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second. All in favor, raise hands. Okay, unanimous?
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your hard work on it.
Yes.
Nobody's saying y'all didn't work hard on this, just a matter of making sure we're clear.
It's very complicated.
Okay. Okay, ordinance is second reading, 7A.
Ordinance number 2019-09, an ordinance annexing a portion of an approximate 35.05 acre tract of land out of the S. Wallace survey number 113, abstract number 347, and into the corporate limits of City of Kerrville, Texas, said tract being located within Kerr County, Texas, and the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the City of Kerrville, Texas, and generally located adjacent to Loop 534 Veterans Highway. Further describing the property to be annexed, adopting a service plan for the property annex and establishing the zoning both for the property annex and the entire tract.
Thank you. This is our second and final reading for the annexation. I believe you have your backup, preliminary report from the traffic analysis, traffic impact analysis. Pleased to answer any questions if you have.
I did have a question about Dr. Faust's letter. I'm not an expert on traffic counts, so he does give us information that he's garnered on, their, their best guess on traffic increases, but it would, I'd need to know kind of, is that normal, above normal, below normal? Because I think he mentions 376 at peak hour, you know, on and on. He's got quite a bit of...
Right.
So I was just curious if that's...
Alan?
Mayor, council member. I'm Alan Lynn Scott, Civil Engineering Consultant for the District Engineer. We have a couple of traffic engineers in our office that have been working on this project. They do traffic studies for most of the school districts in San Antonio. Their opinion is that the traffic will be, you know, within normal limits. They rate service levels of roads, A being the best, and going on down. They project that Olympic Drive, when built, would still, with the traffic anticipated by the school, and even if additional traffic is generated from people from the loop cutting through, that it would still maintain an A rating. We, the original traffic study was really done to meet TechDOT requirements for determining stacking bay lanes and things like that, since the city doesn't have a traffic ordinance. Since that report was done, we've acquired some additional data from TechDOT that they generated when they did the signal at Singing Wind. And we also are going back out, they were supposed to do it today, I'm not sure if it got done, and do what's called an origination destination study, looking at the vehicles that are coming down Singing Wind from nor, or I guess, north or west of the elementary, and do they continue, would, how many of them would then turn left onto the loop and continue to the high school or pass the high school? And then conversely, how many are coming south on the loop that would turn on Singing Wind and go past the elementary? We know from TechDOT study how many actually turn left or turn right. And assuming the worst case, that they all continued by the high school or by the elementary, or they, you know, were to take the shortcut, you're adding during peak hours, one to two vehicles a minute, and maybe over a 24-hour period, four to 500 vehicles in a day. We don't think that all of those actually make it that far, because there's a fair amount of development between the loop and Tom Daniels. They're turning off to go down towards, you know, 27, go into that area, those housing areas, businesses that are down in there. But after we get the additional data, we'll be able to, you know, refine this a little bit more, but...
I was curious.
Traffic guides say that it's, you know, not going to create an adverse level of traffic on that roadway. And, you know, I was, we, we also did the high school a number of years ago when it was built, and the orientation of the high school and the entrance was predicated on Olympic Drive eventually coming through.
Okay, thanks. I was curious about the percentage of non-school-related traffic, too. There's probably no way really knowing that.
Well, you know, with the, going, they, they actually videotape the cars and then go back and...
Know if they turn.
Say, okay, you know, this red, whatever went, you know, made it all the way through. I sat out there at Tom Daniels one morning and watched where people were coming from. It's kind of evenly split. Half of them come from the north and turn around and go back, half come from the south and turn around and go back.
Okay.
The other way.
What, what's the criteria for A, Level A?
Look at the number of peak hour trips, you know, and the number of lanes, things like that. That type roadway could probably still be classified as an A with maybe 500, 600 peak hour trips. And we're looking, we're projecting that the middle school would generate somewhere around 200 peak hour trips. And so if all of these that are turning at Singing Wind were to go through there, you're adding another 80 to 100 to there. So you're still half the capacity of an A-level street.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question, more for staff, I think. So what we're approving tonight is a portion of the property that's not currently in the city limits right now. Part of the property being already annexed into the city limits, correct?
That's correct.
And then the second part of that is we are approving the zoning for that area specifically. Now, what is the remainder of the approval process when we're going through this process of road construction, site planning? Do we give up all of that by approving this, or what's, what happens next?
Yes, the, the next step will be go through the permitting process and the site plan process. That's through Development Services. Of course, the infrastructure piece goes through Public Works and City Engineering.
Okay.
And Plating.
Mr. Mayor, you were concerned about traffic.
Yeah, I was, I was concerned, and Dr. Faust's letter helped clarify things for me. I, I am, I am, I'm still concerned, but I think we've got to move forward. And if we encounter problems, then we're going to need to, need to address them. All right. Anybody else? Okay, do you hear? Motion regarding ordinance number 2019-09.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2019-09 on second reading.
All right.
On second.
Okay.
That's very happy.
Yeah, okay. All right. All in favor, raise the hand. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Drew.
Thank you, Drew.
And thank you, Mr. Lipscomb.
Okay. 8A has been withdrawn by the person who made that recommendation or made that request as, okay, and so 8B.
Discussion and approval of the...
If you'll read it in for us.
Discussion and approval of the Kerrville-Kerr County Joint Airport Board Budget, fiscal year 2019-2020. This item has been requested and initiated by Mary Roar, Airport Manager.
All right. City Manager?
Yeah, just annually, this is a process that we go through prior to our budget process. There are some commitments that we have in our budget for some matching funds. This is really about the operating budget, and there's been lots of discussions about capital, and their capital budget, which is really a capital recruitment plan that we need to have some further discussions about. There's still, Mary will tell you, there's still estimating costs for different locations, as you all have seen on your tour. But that will continue that discussion, and we're talking about some of the options that we might have to help make some of that happen. But it's not really about the operating budget.
All right, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the council members. Thank you very much for most of you that came to our tour last, a couple of weeks ago. I think it probably helped understand what we have going on here at the airport. So what we're, just as Mark had mentioned, what we're talking about today is, or this evening, is the operating budget. So that's our kind of day-to-day operations, and as you can see on the exhibits, that our revenues and expenditures are balanced. What we have on page three, our number on page three, is basically the, the revenues that we are gaining from our rental income is then the same as the round, or the expenditures that we have budgeted for the year. So we're balancing our revenues against our expenses. So I guess that's probably the first, first thing that we'd like to make sure that you understood. Most of the budget is pretty similar to previous budgets that we've done over the past few years. We've added some additional costs in here for some, just to keep us working on all of our strategic and master plan initiatives. I've given you a copy of our strategic plan initiatives, as well as our goals and objectives for you all to understand of where we're taking things through and working on some economic development and addressing some of those. So we do have some funding available for us to reach out and do some more and different things. And, and I've been continuing to work with EA and folks on all the, what we call the capital project development, which will come in at a later date. But we've got, given you some general ideas of the different alternatives we looked at a couple of weeks ago, of what the juggle bucket size of the bucket that we'll be looking for on those projects, but those just for information. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, questions? Let me roll.
I would just like to commend you for being in the black.
Thank you.
You see the trend on your report, too.
Yeah, it's, it's a nice trend.
So, good job.
That was done before me. I can only, I can only offer the, what we go for from here.
Anybody else? Let me, let me just say, I'm not a pilot, and I don't understand aviation or general aviation, airport, but we have a, we have a real jewel in this airport. And it generates more in terms of economically here than a lot of people realize. And they, that, that long runway out there can even and have received a 737. So, anyway, thank you.
Certainly. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Do you have a motion in that, in that regard?
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget as presented by Mary Roar, the Airport Manager, for the 2015-2020 airport operations budget.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second. All in favor, by the raised hand. See, what I'm going to recommend at this point, if we take a five-minute break, and then I want to tell you about the rest of the meeting. I, I'm not, I'm not encouraging anybody to leave, but we will come back, and then we have information discussion, three different items. There's no voting on those, they're, they're reports. I'm going to recommend that we move items for future agendas up. Then we'll go into an executive session for board appointments, and then also regarding economic development negotiations. I do want to explain one thing. On 12A, it says, Section 55107 for Personnel Matters, to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. And then it says, appointments to Economic Improvement Corporation. That first sentence does not apply to what we're doing. Nobody's getting fired. Let's take a five-minute break at 7:49. We reconvene.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can y'all hear me now?
No, I have a little more.
Okay. A person in behind the booth, the wizard, I need to have a little more volume, because I do have something to say later. Can you hear me now? Okay, this is them, over there for some reason.
All right.
So...
Okay, financial update?
Husband is tuning me out.
All right, so we have the financial update for the month ended April 30th, 2019. And there should be a slide presentation to bring that up. All right, very good. Okay, I'm going to go through this briefly. So we're going to start with the general fund and year-to-date through the end of April. So we're going to start with the general fund and year-to-date through the end of April. We've had revenues of nineteen point two million compared to expenditures of fourteen point six million. It's normal to be in a position like this where we're in the black by so much at this time of the year because property taxes, our largest revenue source are all due by, are mostly due by the end of January. Moving on to general fund revenues, in general, they are looking very good. It looks like we are going to hit budget on our property tax, our largest revenue source on sales tax. We continue to come in ahead of budget and we're up seven percent compared to twenty eighteen, and that's better than budget. One thing to note, though, in the month of April, we received prepayments from two of our large sales taxpayers. So May is going to look like we're down, but we actually just got the money a little bit early.
Why would they do that or?
I, I think it may have to do with just a timing issue at the comptroller's office of somehow it made it into their distribution to us in April instead of in May.
I just wondered if there was some incentive or something.
Yeah, because talking to those, those particular payers, they said that they just did it the way they always do it. Somehow it made it in a month early or made it to us a month early. So next month will look a little bit lower. Our expenditures continue to be slightly under budget on the general fund side. And moving on to the water fund, we have revenues of six point three million compared to expenditures of seven point one million. Looking at the revenues there, not so good. So we've had nineteen inches more rainfall in twenty, in twenty nineteen compared to twenty eighteen, year-to-date through the end of April. Our water consumption has decreased by fourteen percent. So that's greatly impacted our water sales and reuse sales. On the sewer side as well, we, you know, as you know, we don't meter our sewer water, but we set sewer averages for residential customers. So we actually saw a decrease in our sewer averages that were set during the month of April. So it looks like that even though we try to pick the months with least irrigation, usually there are customers that irrigate during those winter months and they were not irrigating this year. So it looks like we're going to come in short of budget on the sewer sale side. And on the water sale side, it's really going to be dependent on the weather this summer and how things go. Luckily, on the expenditure side, our expenditures are lower than budget specifically because of better-than-anticipated maintenance and chemical costs. So we're hoping that, that these savings hold and that we don't have anything major that breaks and has to be repaired, but that should help us offset some of this lost revenue. Moving on to other funds, the Development Services Fund has revenue of six hundred and eighty thousand compared to expenditures of eight hundred and twenty thousand. And as you've heard before, their expenditures compared to previous years are up significantly because this year includes three hundred and seventy-nine thousand towards their code rewrite and software expense, conversion expense. On the golf fund, they've also been hit by the same problems with weather that we've seen in the water fund. So revenues of four hundred and forty-nine thousand compared to expenditures of five hundred and thirteen thousand year-to-date through April. The Hotel Occupancy Fund, though, they continue to have strong revenue performance. We're seeing it at multiple properties. So revenues of seven hundred and fifty-three thousand compared to expenses of six hundred and six thousand. And it's important to note that we were looking at lists of properties recently and we've had a property closure, the Big Texas Inn, that is now going to be a Hobby Lobby. We're not receiving occupancy tax from them anymore and we're still up in spite of that. So, and when you factor out the audit payment that we received from Yogi Bear, still up about seven percent this year compared to last year. And then we've added, added a new page, Real Estate Update, that, that several council members have asked about. So I'm getting these statistics from the Kerrville Board of Realtors. And the graph that I'm showing here shows residential properties sold and they track things on a calendar year. So this is January through April. So you can see that the dollar value of residential property sales is up compared to twenty eighteen. The chart below shows just metrics for the month of April. So the month of April looks a little bit lower compared to twenty eighteen as far as active listings and number of sales, but year-to-date performance still looks strong. Development Services is also working on getting us some permit and metrics to add to the presentation for hopefully next month as they work through their new software and getting the reports that they want out of that. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
It's a, it's a bit of a theoretical question, but as more and more, okay, given the drop in revenue related to water and the number of rainy days, as more people use rain catchment systems, is that going to affect us?
Possibly. It, you know, it could definitely decrease the amount of consumption that we have. It would have to be on a fairly large-scale basis, but I mean, we are looking at water catchment systems, but certainly it's important to remember the overall impact of our natural resource and conserving that. And, you know, I know y'all heard about the long-range water plan recently, so you have some good information there. But yeah, I don't think that at this point, any of the numbers we're seeing this year because of rainwater catchment systems, I think it more is just actual rainfall and less irrigation. But something to think about, though.
Okay. Anyone else? Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. We have next, monthly community improvement projects.
Here's the big version.
Oh, okay. Yes. All right.
I know we're getting late in the evening, you've got quite a bit of agenda left, so I'm just going to highlight four or five of these twenty-two active community improvement projects that we have going on. Reuse Distribution Manage, number five, and number six, Aerial Pipe Bridge Removal. We are slated to go before the Texas Water Development Board in relation to the two grant pieces that we have that are active that total up for one million. That will be the first phase and then we are looking to apply for a secondary phase for the second million for that reengineering of that effort. So we are slated at the end of June where Amy and I will be going up to the Texas Water Development Board for that, that hearing. So we anticipate approval and we will keep the council posted on that effort. Number eleven, Legion Lift Station in Fort Main, that project is very active. If you've driven by the Loop five thirty-four and twenty-seven, we have essentially dug out the entirety of that project and are beginning to go vertical, if you will, getting back up to the level area. So it's going very well so far. We have not been delayed very significantly by the rains, fortunately. And so we're still on track to have that facility operational by first quarter of twenty twenty. Just quickly, number nineteen and number twenty-two, two big efforts, very important to the community, Drainage Master Plan and Payment Management Plan. Those are in process and significant level of those drafts are done and are in the staff review process. So we are hoping to be able to bring those preliminary drafts before the council in some form or fashion in the June and July timeframe. So we hear loud and clear how important that is to the community and we're very excited to be at this stage of those master planning efforts. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I just had a question, number three, you didn't even, you didn't address it, but it was so neat to see the parking lot filled this weekend. And I was just curious as to how much money do we have left? How far are we with our projects, just kind of, just ballpark?
For the parking garage enhancements and water street, street cape, so we are in the process of, as you know, we're contracted with Pierre Lewis Architects for the design efforts for the elements kind of around the parking garage. The elements interior to the parking garage, we've essentially completed the deferred maintenance items. So we're in the design process. We've actually kicked that off and so we would anticipate design over the next probably two, three, four months with a construction project anticipated in the fall timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question on number eight. The, have we incurred any or come across any challenges regarding the, dealing with the owners regarding that extension of the River Trail and has it been a smooth agreement with all the owners?
Relatively smooth. We're working through easements and finalization of those easements right now, but thus far, so far so good.
Good. And then the pool, I guess it opened?
It did.
And the plaster got repaired?
We had tremendous attendance this weekend.
Excellent, excellent. So whatever that little repair was, was, was able to be done and-
We did some inner repairs. We sped those up as quickly as we could so we could make sure, and they have the opening for the pool this weekend. As mentioned earlier, we are going to need to look at a replastering effort. And we're going to time that hopefully at the September timeframe as we're winding down with the pool season, but before we pick back up on what is typically a kind of a wet October for us. That can be detrimental when you drain the pool. So we've got kind of a short window in there that we're going to try to hit. So we're going to have, hopefully have that contract lined up and get some good bids this summer so we can accomplish that work and get, get some, last bit of good life out of that facility.
Good. Thank you.
Good. Any other questions? Great. Thank you. Okay. Ruth, and follow-up, Guillermo on the report on Development Services.
There you go.
All right. So, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm trying to make this as short as possible. There's a lot of information to be presented, but I am here to present the two-month after action from when we started the improvements at Development Services. And so the goal is to come back to you every two months to present the actions that we've completed over time. I'll start first off with the purposes of Development Services and that the purpose is to continue to ensure the quality of life in the city of Kerrville through consistent enforcement of codes and ordinances using innovative regulation and customer education as well through as, as well as through a proactive consultation process with customers and users. And I, I read that because I'm, I want everybody to understand that we are working towards that goal. And all the actions and all the corrective improvements that we're working on are geared towards achieving that specific purpose of working with our customers and giving them a good product and service. With that being said, we have three major services that are within the development service, development services. Those services are building services and its goal is to ensure consistent enforcement of codes and ordinances through the building process. Then we have code compliance and its goal is to ensure health, safety, and welfare of the community. Planning, ensure a partnership with developers and property owners to ensure proper development of the city of Kerrville. So those are the three major services that we have and we're looking at improving every one of the processes that are involved with each one of those services. How we're going to do that process improvement is through this framework that we're utilizing. These are tools that are, are within our Lean Six Sigma tool case, our tool bag, but we've pulled them out so that we can focus on, on certain aspects. One is five S, which I'll go a little bit much deeper into what five S is. The other's visual management, standardized work, and then for those bigger projects where we can't have an answer to certain things that we're doing, that's where the lean, actual Lean Six Sigma methodology will be utilized, an actual more formal project with Lean Six Sigma tools. As part of our continuous improvement efforts, we're focusing on three basic things, people, the process, and the code itself. Last year or last spring, one of the things that we did was we sat down with a key group of individuals, a key group of development community, and we called them our stakeholders. And these stakeholders is really our way of capturing the voice of the customer. The voice of the customer is critical to us because it allows us to understand what is important to them in regards to quality, what is important in, in regards to cost, and then also the delivery of our products or services. And so what we used was the Kanal model. And the Kanal model is designed to capture the voice of the customer and, and break it down into three segments. One is, you know, what would blow your socks off? What would be the most things that would excite you about the processes if we were able to implement certain changes? The next thing is the must haves, or I'm sorry, the more is better. The more is better is about, these are the things we're already doing, but what can we do more to make the process better? And then, of course, you have your must haves, those are the basic things that we have to excel at. And so the customers, our stakeholders, went through and identified a number of actions and a lot of those actions can actually be broken down into the project that's being worked by Trina, which we're getting really close to closing out. And then also the Development Services, the continuous improvement efforts that we're working through now. And then the last category, which is, I can't read it from here, but it is the software updates, and that's what we're trying to do now. One of the first things that we did as I started looking at the organization itself was just looking at the organizational chart as a whole. And so one of the things I found interesting was that over the past two years is that we've had a fifty percent turnover. And so everybody that has a star is the person that who's new to the organization itself. And so there's a lot of changes that have been coming down the pipe for the last two years. So in order to change that, we've modified the organizational chart just a little bit, but I want to also describe that we looked at all of our job descriptions. We wanted to make sure that all the job descriptions were meeting the requirements of today and what are our expectations of our, of our staff were today. What we found when we were starting to go through that, that a lot of our job descriptions were a little bit dated. They hadn't been modified for a while. And so it was a good exercise to go through that process of updating our job descriptions and making sure that we were communicating our current expectations to our staff. The other thing that we did was we modified one of the, one of the individual's job title, and that was because of the fact that the previous job title was Assistant Director of Building Services. So that was causing some confusion as to where that person was reporting directly to the Chief Building Officer or was that person reporting to the Executive Director of Development Services? And so we want to make sure we cleared that up, so we changed that. So it's now the Assistant Director for Development Services. And that person's gotten a few more responsibilities as well in regards to helping to manage the budget, making sure that the business plan is being completed as well, and some other little odd things that we were able to assign that person. The next thing that we did also was the Administrative Assistant. And the Administrative Assistant, what we're trying to do there is kind of balance it out because in the past we've had that balance worked now, but we have also had where that Administrative Assistant is focused strictly on planning. And then we've had that Administrative Assistant focused strictly on permitting. And so we want to make sure it's a combination of the two, but be specific in the sense that fifty percent or more is going to be, that person's going to be concentrating on the permitting side. And now that might change as we're starting to roll out MGO and all the other components of my government online. And then fifty percent or less will be dedicated to permitting, I'm sorry, for a plan review or a plan itself. And so that's still going to be changed and we're still going to look at that some more. So organizational-wise, how we impact more individuals, the people on the work staff, is that implementing five S. And five S is a workplace organizational tool. It helps us to reduce waste and optimize productivity by focusing in on their actual workspace. Okay? And so by five S, what the five S's stand for is sorting, shine, set, standardization, and sustainment. And so by sorting, one of the cool things that we've had this last few weeks is that we've had some construction going to Development Services and during that timeframe, through, as they're going back into their offices, we've asked them to sort out what is not value-added. In other words, if it's not adding value to your job or increasing your productivity, then we need to get rid of that. And also asking them, why do we have so much paperwork in your work area if you don't need it? And so the staff has gone through and tried to remove a lot of the old stuff that's in their offices to make it cleaner, which brings us to the shine portion. And so part of five S is to shine the org, find, shine the area. And so what we're trying to do is get a workspace that is clean, because when you walk into a workspace and you sit down in an office that is cluttered, just organized, from a psychological perspective, you don't want to really be there. And so one of the things is by cleaning the area up, making sure that it's organized, people want to work in their spots. They want to do the best job available or produce their best ability to do their jobs. And which, that comes into set. And set is about the mantra of five S, which is a place for everything and everything in its place. You're really getting organized. And so what that means is that during the day, yes, you're working and you're doing things that you need to do, but at the end of day, just like a banker, you put all of your stuff away. You organize it so that it's clean and organized so that the next day you come into work, you're coming into a clean environment and you have a new day to start from. And then, of course, we have the standardization and that's just basically going to be out, buying some tools that they need to make sure that they have a standard workspace. And then the sustainment is about auditing. And so one of the things that we will continue to do, whether it's on a weekly or monthly basis, is to audit their workspace through what's called a five S audit. And this is where we'll give the work staff feedback as to how well they're maintaining their five S's for their workspace. The next thing that we have in here is visual management. This is another tool that's utilized, that I've used extensively in many organizations, whether it's in automotive industry or in municipal government. And one of the things that we're going to do is use the visual management to communicate- And one of the things that we're gonna do is use the Visual Management to communicate expectations, performance, and the results of what we're doing. And so the next page here is an example of what a Visual Management Board could look like. This is just one aspect of Visual Management. But on this Visual Management Board, we're gonna communicate what our audits are. We're gonna communicate our business plan, in other words, our actions and our results. So that if you walk into Development Services, you don't have to go ask, hey, where's your business plan? Where are your results? You can go to this board and you can actually physically see how we're performing as an organization. And so that's an important tool that we're gonna implement here soon now that the construction's over with. So from a process standpoint, the biggest impact for a process is our software. Last week of April, we implemented My Government Online. And this is what the screenshot looks like is when you go out and start to go log on to My Government Online from the customer portal. My Government Online actually has three functions or three categories that we're going to implement here at the city. The first one is the permitting inspections, and that's the first section that we've already begun implementing. And that was started on the last week of April. And as you can see here from this picture, we've actually added a kiosk so that customers can come in, they can use the kiosk, and then, of course, staff can help the individual if they need to. But ultimately, what we're trying to do is get everybody to utilize the system online to apply for a permit, see where the permit status of their permit is, actually pay their, pay their fees as well through the software. And then lastly, they can, they'll be able to print their permits from online as well. So they don't have to actually come to the office. The office, of course, is still available, and we're still there to help them. But those that are, that can, can, can really never have to step into the office at all and get a lot of communication back and forth. Again, that's their choice. They can still come in, and we can still help them as we go along. So this is just a screenshot of the My Government Online portal. This is where, when you're starting the process of actually requesting a permit or some kind of request, this is what it looks like from the customer side. The customer can also then, there it goes. The customer can also, also, can then also see all the work that they've submitted, all the projects that they've submitted as well. And they can see the different statuses. They can click on those specific items and go into much more detail to see where their permit's at. Another thing that they can do is actually see why a permit was failed or why a permit was passed. And they can print out the information that they need. And again, once they've paid their fees, they can actually print out the actual permit itself from their location. They don't have to wait. And then the cool thing about this as well is that when our inspectors go to a location, they can pull up My Government Online from an iPad and have access to all this information at their fingertips. And so they don't have to carry the extra paperwork as well because they can just pull up their iPad and see if this person was permitted to do whatever work that may be necessary. And they can also see the different plans that they have online as well.
Guillermo.
Yes, sir.
Real quick. Now, is that already, is that already being implemented?
Yes, sir. It's already been implemented as of the last week of April.
What do the customers say?
The, some of the cut feedback I've gotten from the customers over, I wouldn't say overwhelmingly, but I would say a majority have been very happy with the software. Yes, we have some, some customers that are not happy with it because it's changed. But we're working with them and trying to help them as much as possible to work through the software itself. And a lot of the customers that we have as well have used My Government Online at other municipalities. And so it's the same login, same information for them. All they have to do is change where my, my municipality is. And so they just use it that way.
While you're stopped, who inputs the information? Do you have?
Staff, well, the customer requests it, and then when we're evaluating it and evaluating the permits, the, the application or wherever it may be, staff actually does. There, there's two portals. There's the customer-side portal, and then they have the My Permit Now portal, which is the, the side that staff goes into and actually makes comments and sees everything that's been submitted. Yes, ma'am.
Since we are stopped, and I may be ahead of the game, is there kind of, is there a timeframe? I, I come in, I, or I go online and I put in for a permit for something or other. When can I, is it, does it give me a timeframe that I can expect to hear back? Is it an automatic back through the software or?
So the, the software itself, we have a standing policy internally. The, the software just tells you where you're at on that specific timeline. But internally, we have a, we have a requirement where we're trying to meet and do a plan review, for example, within five business days. And then from that, we have additional five days to respond back to the customer. So in total, we have a 10-day business day window.
And is that, or that would become an expectation there for the customer? Are they told that? Is, is that, that's something that they see? It tells them that's what they can expect?
And most customers in the past have been told seven days, but we're trying to push that down. That our internal review would be seven days, but we're going to five days. And we've been doing that for the last year pretty much. And most, most times when we respond to the customers, we're doing it about seven to eight days and not necessarily the full 10 days. Again, that's on average, so averages move.
Okay. Thank you.
So as we go through forward, as in the standardization of the processes themselves, this is where I'm leveraging my experience when I've worked in the automotive industry and also in different municipalities. And part of that is using, in the automotive world, what we call QS 9000 or TS 16949, which is the standard of how we organize our work. And so in the automotive world, without those two certifications and without proof and evidence of that, you can't even ship product to your customer, which it may be Chrysler, Ford, or whoever it may be. So what we're using is elements of those items and ISO 9001 to help us to standardize our processes. The first thing that we're doing is looking at our regulations and looking at federal law, state law, local law, and anything that pertains to give us an idea of what we're, what is required of us as an organization. Then, of course, we have the city policy and all the policies that are involved so that we're aware of those things. But most importantly, from three to four and five, tho, those sections, those are the areas that we're really concentrating on. Because the procedures that we're going to develop allow the department to, to communicate to the staff members of what we want the process to do and what we want them to do. Now, we're establishing written expectations of what we want the process to do. The second thing that we'll have is the work instructions. And the work instructions are more detailed. They'll, they go into specifically how to do specific functions within the process, within the process. And so the, what was handed out to you is examples of two procedures, of one procedure. So if you flip through that, you can see the procedure itself and all the detail that's involved with that. And then on the next page that you see as well with all the screenshots, is a work instruction that we're working, currently working on now to finalize on. Now that we have MGO or My Government Online, we're taking screenshots of those items so that somebody can come in, a new person, a new staff member, or somebody like myself, can go in and say, okay, how do I, how do I submit a permit or how do I approve a permit? And I can follow those steps from step one all the way to step two by looking at the screenshots as we're going through. So providing all that instructions for, for the staff members. And then lastly, of course, we're gonna have forms, and this is where we're controlling our forms. We're making sure that we have all the obsolete, obsolete forms are out of our process. Hence, going back to the sign issue, one of the, one of the reasons we had some issues is because the forms were old and, no, but we didn't go back and review them. So we'll go back through and clean all that up, and we'll make sure that all the forms and all the documents are properly coded and tracked on a spreadsheet so that we know when things need to be updated as well as audited as we go forward. Excuse me. So now we get into Building Services itself and some of the processes that we've looked at right now. One process that we looked at was the inspection process. And so the way we did this, the way we approached it and all these examples that I'm gonna give you, is we sat down, we defined what the problem is, we defined what our expectations were for this particular process. And then what we, we, we as a team sat down together and mapped out the process. And then, once we've mapped out the current process, we said, how can we change it? How can we improve this particular process? And so on this example that we have up here, the old process took about 18 steps, and that's not including the decision points, but 18 overall steps. And based on our improvements and changes that we made to the process, we're looking at potentially 10 steps. So we're saving eight steps in that process. And then on top of that, with My Government Online now, we're using it. We're, we're expecting that we'll be able to reduce that a little bit more. I don't know how many steps, but I think we, we have a good feeling that we probably maybe reduce it to about eight steps in total. So we're making the process more efficient. And this is a copy or just the front page of the procedures that we created for that particular inspection process, which is, I believe, is the one that you have in front of you. Our next process that we looked at was a certificate of occupancy. On the certificate of occupancy, as you can see, it's a very complicated process with 31 steps. There's a lot of different steps that go, that we go through. And from looking at it and analyzing the process itself, we think we can do the step or that process in 19 steps. And again, that's also utilizing My Government Online to help us to, to make that process a little bit more efficient. But also, as we were going through, we saw we, we had a lot of redundancy that we wanted to eliminate from the process itself. And this is a copy of the procedure that we've created for this particular process. Now we get into the planning division. And for the planning division itself, we, the first one we looked at was the overall development. And in this case, we use the swim lane process mapping. And that basically allows us to look at how it cross-sections to different departments and different areas and different functionalities from the customer to Development Services to, let's say, engineering or the water department. And so what we looked at and we analyzed it is not so much the steps in this regard, but how can we make this flow a little easier? And so that's the biggest difference that you see between the two. Yes, we took out three steps, but we also tried to make it, make the process flow easier so that we can have better decisions, better responses to the customers as well. And this is a copy of the procedure that we've created for that particular item. The next one is the pre-development process. Now, this process, in generalities, we informally did, and we informally followed, but there was nothing in writing as to how to do this particular process or even how to, in the past. And so what we've done is basically said, okay, so if nobody really knows how to do it, how do we want the process to work? And so we went into the actual improve phase of this process to show, okay, how does this process work? How do, how, how would it go through the entire process? And so we're still working on this one. We still need to clean it up and actually create the actual procedure as well for that. So this is still a work in progress, but it's something that I think we're moving forward on. The next item is code enforcement itself. So we've looked at the mobile food unit process. And this was something that we had to jump on very quickly because we had passed the ordinance to allow food trucks. And so we went through and developed a new process map for that. We looked at different cities as well to get a good process map and see what other organizations were doing. So we've developed something that, that I feel is probably be tweaked over time because it's continuous improvement. And so overall, I think it's a good process map, and we've actually developed the procedure for it as well. The next thing is the junk vehicles. In the junk vehicles, one of the first things is we started going through the process. One of the questions came up as to the language in our current code. And once we started looking at that and we started looking at other cities, we looked at San Angelo, we looked at San Marcos, we looked at San Antonio and some other ones that escaped me at this point in time. We found that we did need to make some tweaks. And so we've been working with the city attorney to make those tweaks to the ordinance. And so hopefully here in the next month or two, or, or sometimes here soon, we can bring that to you so, for review and for your consideration. From a code standpoint, excuse me, from a code standpoint, these are the codes that are gonna be evaluated. The zoning code and the sign code, the zoning overlays, the subdivision ordinance, the sidewalk ordinance, the parkland dedication ordinance, the building code adoption of 2018 international building codes. And so the next few pages are just an outline and timeline of when things are getting done for these specific codes. Everybody knows that on May, May 16th, we have the, the event at the Leder Center. And then all the other actions, all the other items are gonna be presented over time. Once we've completed that portion, we'll start working on the zoning overlays, the subdivision ordinance, and so forth. And this kind of gives you an overlay of the timeline per se of when that's gonna happen. And then lastly is the adoption of the 2018 international building codes. So we have the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. When I, when I created the PowerPoint, the meeting that we had scheduled, we didn't have a quorum, so it was rescheduled for this week on Thursday, this Thursday, for they'll be meeting. And so they'll be reviewing the code itself. And then hopefully we'll be able to move to an open house in early June. First reading in June 25th and the second reading on the 9th, and then go effective October 1st.
This isn't the first time you've used the international building codes, is it?
No, ma'am.
They've been in, yeah.
Yeah. It's just a different version.
Different version, okay.
Guillermo, I have a concern on the pre-development process. You said you hadn't finished it. What have you been doing?
So we've been trying to refine that.
I'm kidding. Yeah, I mean, you presented us a lot.
So lastly, on my last slide, is basically we're gonna continue to incorporate the My Government Online to our new procedures and our new work instructions. That's the big, heavy workload that we're doing now is we kind of had to go back to the procedures we've already developed and create the work instructions based on My Government Online. So that's kind of what we've been doing this last month, is trying to work through that portion. And then the next thing that we'll do, and this isn't going into effect until probably October, where we ensure quality assurance of the recent improvements. And part of the, like what I was explaining earlier, TS 9, TS 16949 or even ISO 9000, is to do formal audits of the process. And we want to make sure that what we say we're doing, we're actually doing. And so that'll be an audit process that we'll, we'll be developing later down the road as we get closer to that timeframe. And then from continue updating processes, these are just some examples. Identification of dangerous buildings, contractor registration process, the site plan review process, the long-range planning, the food inspection process, the hotel, motel inspection process. These are just some of them. I mean, we're, we're, in total, we're looking at 30-plus processes that we're evaluating, and we're trying to do those as quickly as possible. Any questions?
A question on when, when you finish this with, and you work with people, is there an automatic survey that, that the program spits out for customers to respond to?
Not at this time, but it is something that we've talked about. And one of the things that, as, as a team, we've discussed of revamping our business plan and then figuring out a way to incorporate either Survey Monkey into that as, as a response somehow. But I don't know how that's gonna look because I know My Government Online doesn't have that functionality at that, at this point in time. So it, it is on my radar. It's just I haven't put it on the, on the burner yet.
That's good. The other thing is, when it comes to telephones, do you have telephone policies? As to, you get a call and how quickly you need to respond to that person or?
It, it, the telephone policy is based on the policies established by the city. And we try to answer phone calls within two rings, I believe. I can't remember all the details, but is in that specific policy for the city?
And I'm talking more, if somebody leaves a message and then?
Yeah. So the, the, if somebody leaves a message, we try to answer that back as quickly as possible or within 24 hours.
Because I noticed on your, one of your sheets, you've got an eight by the importance of customer service. It's the highest number on your whole report.
Yeah.
So obviously it's.
It's big on, on our radar.
Your turnaround responses really, and that's what your stakeholder said.
And that's one of the reasons why that position, the Admin Assistant, we want to try to make it where it's 50% or more focused in on that permitting side because we only have two persons that actually take in permits and review. So we want to make sure that we're getting, we're giving that customer response as quickly as possible.
Great. That's important. Lot of work.
No, I'm excited as someone that's concerned about the building process in Kerrville just to know that that's being looked at with the cost of land and the cost of infrastructure, to put that together, any other ways to mitigate expenses, which it looks like this will do. I, I'm excited about. Time is money.
I applaud you for what you've got going.
Well, I, I have to give credit to the team because they're the ones that are making it happen. And we're just being persistent with it.
Trina, I have a question for you. In Lubbock or anywhere else, did you use My Government Online?
No, I'm not. We were looking at different software. We did visit a couple cities that used it and kind of got some feedback from the longtime users, had positive. Positive comments.
I had, sorry. I had an opportunity to talk to some people about various aspects, signage, whatever. And, and so I've offered to come with them down to City Hall and Development Services and literally show them. So I might put you all on the spot at some point, say, next Wednesday at 2:00 or whatever. This is their question, and can, can you firsthand show us? And it would, it would educate me as well, so I might do that. I've been kind of waiting. I mean, they're, they're doing some things on their own. They're not waiting for me. But I think that would be good for us and good to.
And we could go in and make up something and just to, just to see how it all works, right?
Yes, ma'am. Just don't get to the point where you're paying.
Okay.
That won't happen, won't it?
The, I just want to say that Development Services, I'm not excluding others, but Development Services is such a complex process.
It is. I've been learning that very quickly.
Very, it's very intensive in terms of human contact on both sides.
I was gonna say, your frontline with customers, that's.
Yeah, yeah, right.
That's remarkable what you've done. This is just amazing.
Sounds good.
Thank you. But again, I have to give credit to the staff.
The team. It is a, a good team.
Thank you, thank you. All right. We've got, we've got two questions that we need to settle. My suggestion is we go with Items for Future Agenda now. And then we do. And then we do the executive session on board appointments. Now, question is if we, if we make decisions on board appointments, do we come out and announce that? Or do we go ahead and do the economic development issue and then come out after both?
I would say if we're in there, let's do it all in there.
But I think that's what we do usually.
Okay, all right. Okay, do you have items for future agendas?
I just wanted to announce we are doing a workshop, uh, tomorrow for the appraisal district. And that was one of the things that we had put on our future agenda list and we're, it will happen.
Good, good.
Is it too soon to talk about the twenty twenty-four solar eclipse?
I can't hear you, can you speak up?
Okay, um, is it too soon to talk about the twenty twenty-four solar eclipse, which?
Yes.
Okay.
We're, we're forming a committee for Curville now. And I, I just tasked Chief Smith to lead that effort, so more time.
Okay, good, got me all excited.
You know, it, it came out of the public comments. I, I grew up playing disc golf. Uh, it was a great family deal. I don't know if Parks and Rec has done some previous studies on that or looked at it. Could we possibly at some future, just get a report back on what their take on that is?
Sure.
I'd like to hear it.
All right. Okay, um, do I hear a motion for our going into executive session for five-five-one point oh seven four and five-five-one point oh eight seven?
I still move.
All right.
Second.
Oh, okay, so you got a motion, second all in favor raised hand. So for those of you that are here, I don't know when we're going to be back out, but you are obviously welcome to stay.
Where's the existing one, I mean, is it across the street? Or is that by citywide?
Yeah, it's on, the existing location is on the actual other side of Route 534. Just kind of right there in the same area, that side.
Okay. Public structure without being like, I think you gotta go above ground? Most of it.
Yeah, they're, they're, I guess, probably the above ground will be a path. Just so you do. So it's, you know, if you kind of collect.
Check one, two, check, one, two, check, 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 one, two. Check microphone, check, one, two, three, four, one, two, one, two. Check, check, one, two, three, four, microphone, check, check, one, two, one, two. Check, check, one, two, check, one, two. Check, check. Check, one, two, check, one, two. Check, one, two, check, check, one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, check. Check, one, two, three, four, five, six. Check, one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four.
We, I worked in Richmond for ten years.
Okay.
So we were right there, we, we lived, well, my wife and I.
Still home?
Went to town, right there at, uh, Rook Allen Custer.
Yeah. I know it sounds bad exactly where you're.
Check, one, two, check, one, two.
And then we ended up moving, uh, a little bit further south, uh, right there at, uh, Arapahoe. Kind of right next to it. But she, my wife actually worked at, she worked at, uh, Benny.
Yeah.
For seven speakers.
Yeah. Did he lock that? Oh, they, they. Go get going, yeah.
I was waiting, I was waiting.
Yeah.
It was crazy, she, she got her commute stopped for four, five, or thirty-four hours. Hell, she was, it's been an hour in the car up there, got permission to play it.
Twenty miles, yeah.
Well, I can't, you know, it's kind of like, uh, and.
Yeah, no, exactly. No, we, we were, uh, we had a, uh, reason we even got here was we had a, uh, group of, uh, four couples went down to San Antonio to, uh, I can tell you.
Okay.
Now it's happened, see, I think it was ultra magnetically, in fact, that's also about the Manchay Trace. So I said, well, hell, let's just, we'll leave early today, and we'll just run by there and see what it looks like, so we did.
Yeah.
And we thought this was pretty nice, I'd always heard one of those places. So, uh, you know, we literally just spent a day here in trouble, back to Dallas. And we said, we're gonna come back, so we scheduled a trip back, and just happened to be that, the weekend, we were, we were both workers, so we had to schedule our time. Just happened to be with the weekend where they had that hundred-year flood, when our house was going down the water. And so, and when we got, we said, we, when we came anyway.
Well.
And, uh, we, as we were going across a lot of the roads, you know, we came down thirty-five and through, and across to, uh, Vernon. There were actually definitely sure, sitting at the bridge, ready to close them, you know. And I thought, this may be kind of stupid. Yeah, we came on anyway, of course you couldn't make an offer, do anything. And we then, so we're driving down, I said, okay, two things, number one, we're definitely not gonna buy a lot, number one. Number two, if we do buy a lot, it's not gonna be on the golf course, so we bought a lot on the golf course that day. And that was ten years, dude, that was ten years from that point before we actually started building, building stuff. But, uh, then we never really considered going anywhere else, we just went down to London.
Yeah.
And I'm really glad we came.
Yeah.
Oh, I said, I can't imagine living anywhere else now.
That's cool. Yeah. So.
Oh, yeah, we were there, uh, our entire married life, except for five years, uh, we, four years in Houston, and one year in Europe, in Europe for a year. Uh, and then, uh, but other than that, we just always lived in a playhouse, yeah. Oh, man. Just amazing, this transformation they had up there. They built that, so every time that thing, kind of toll road, just boom. I mean, it's just, it's, you know, hard to imagine now, but, uh, there was nothing, well, I moved to Dallas in nineteen seventy-three, I was college. And there was literally nothing, very little north of Northwest Island. They had just finished LBJ when I moved there, and the toll road stopped at LBJ. I mean, it stopped, Richardson was, that was boot dogs, they played with it like six thousand people.
Hmm. At nine fourteen, council is back in session, and I heard, we dealt with one item, I'm gonna ask, um, Ms. Eitner if she would make a motion.
I would like to make a motion to appoint the following four individuals to, uh, the Economic Development Corporation, EIC. Uh, Kent McKinney, Danny Almond, Aaron Yates, Greg Richards.
All right. Do I hear this motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Uh, all in favor of these individuals coming on the EIC, let it be known by the right hand. All right, okay.